Oh, we know, we know you do.
You look like it.
Alright, well, here is KJ's nice little shindig here at Pix Pub and Pizzeria. Um, and we're gonna protest, so I'm gonna livestream the whole thing, cause I don't want to, I wanna catch them after now.
I mean, it's, it's kinda crude, but it's a message across. It's all, it's all gonna be black and white.
Okay.
Okay.
There's a hawk. Could you hold us a minute?
There's a hawk.
Huh? What? Can you hold us for a second?
Sure. Oh, we see that. Alright, see ya.
Huh?
You too, sir.
I was checking him out.
So, he saw a human.
Okay.
He was like, I'm like, oh, they have to fight. I'm actually surprised.
That they haven't done anything?
Yeah. It's better to be prepared and not.
I'm not sure if they can see me. There you go, right there, taking pictures?
Yeah.
We can see you. See you. Remember, the public can flip you off. I love that he has to take time out in this to video us.
Yeah.
So, we're, we're interacting with you.
Yeah.
It's good that you took up those flyers, because I'm way over it.
Right, yeah.
And I had it in my pocket.
Hey, from Moon! I think that...
Act as fair, like those girls, fat, healthy, and clean. So, I'm... My neighbor's cat, she gets stuck outside the 88 yard, and she'll come over to us and get back in. Her nick at her hair.
Is there some specific actions you say in town?
Just this.
Just this?
Say yeah?
Just this.
Exactly what that is. There's a campaign party going on.
Oh, yeah, 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 sorry.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, we've got a campaign kickoff, um, so we thought we'd offer the public two different views on the situation. You're gonna try to get me for my side. Is there anything libelous? Of course.
Will Fuego, you're not allowed to give any...
Right, right. Wow, you're terrible. You're a terrible human. Just identify it, I promise. Still, like that, you're still too dumb to know.
Oh my, what's up?
Stop, stop, stop.
So many hats we're getting that people are super supporting, aren't you happy?
That's, that's how they face it.
What's that?
Tell wrong folks, bro.
Oh, well, I had something, but you know, outside, I had to be... Where are you from, Lita? Should I put your address on Facebook or Facebook, like you do to other people?
Everybody knows you're in town.
Yep.
Everybody knows, Maya.
I'll be worried for Trump.
My old blood. My old blood. Why are you hiding your face?
Why are you hiding your face? You're so proud. It's so loud and proud.
Disagree, I don't have a problem with that, you do have a real problem.
Well, Fuego, well, Fuego, all those people support. I didn't say you are.
What's your name, man?
Long hair is a pedophile. George will play you. Who you pick?
Here he is, being his regular holy self, everybody.
Hey, white hat. The pedophile was... You must be... Back up, what you're saying. Yeah, yeah, so, oh, your face.
Where's the Epstein file?
It's somewhere... He got played around. Fucking backup.
A juvenile rapist. A juvenile rapist. A juvenile rapist. What's he?
I don't feel Fuego's having fun in Russia.
Yeah.
Cause you can't... Backing up, you're letting... You're a whore. It's all a matter of public credit deal. Hey, daddy. Daddy in the white hat.
What are you talking? What are you talking?
I'm fucking cunt. Can't back up what you're saying. You're a pedophile. You're a grifter. You pedophile fucking grifter.
You're chill.
Yeah, right behind his sign. I'm not hiding it, but you're sneaking. That fucking orange spit. That fucking orange spit.
You have your very own now.
You are fucking pedophile.
Are you kidding?
You are a fucking pedophile. You're a pedophile. You support pedophiles.
They're being saddled to call a police cell. Also, the guy sucks.
Yeah, him sucks. You know what? Fucking illegals suck. You're a fucking hypocrite. You're an illegal. Person invited to the party and knocked them.
Bacon. Bacon! Bacon! White supremacy! Woo! Woo!
You need a bigger bra. That's a sign for coming out of that bra, baby. I'm wearing my arms.
Bacon! Down with white supremacy! Down with white supremacy!
Yeah, I suck, cause you fucking...
Oh, we know, we know you do. You look like it. Your, your, your family tree is illegal. Your family tree is a breach. All say no. No, I would never fight this country.
Yeah, I suck, cause you fucking...
I'd never fight you. Don't mind people. Don't mind people.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Fucking whore. Don't fucking whore.
Is that all you got? Is that all you got?
Fucking don't know.
You should have said, "Do you?"
Fucking tell me about it. Why do you...
Don't go, baby, you don't get it.
Yeah. Whatever. You're a good example of what's going on. God! That's the kind of people that vote for him.
He's so insecure. What have we got? We got like six people out here with signs, and he's so fucking insecure, he comes out. That shit.
Oh, no.
There's no libel in it, right? Cause he supported Will Fuego, and he supports Trump, and they're both... Will, did he support? Yeah, and grifters... What? Kevin Jordan is the best. Ooh! 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 And he's just talking about... Oh, boy! White supremacists! White supremacists! Make way for the white supremacists! Knows how to use his middle finger. You see the quality of people like support Jordan, and people get all the praise and the finger. So loving, so Christian.
Coming out here to check the door, knowing it's locked.
That's what Jesus would do. Let's go take a little looky poo. How the glare is too much. Get Linda, Linda's gonna get in our face. Hi, Linda, can't trespass the eye. Oh, Jordan. Can't trespass the eye, but you can create conditions for privacy. Bunch of white supremacists.
She ran over the body, Tommy.
I will, I will totally rob that sign. You might get sued. That's okay. I don't know if I can, like, one hand the sign, it's too floppy. Who hit the car? What? Bad Jeep? Can we talk about how Brady is illegally parked right now?
He didn't wanna leave the protest. Last time, he didn't wanna be there.
It's a city councillor illegally parked over there.
It's so weird going there.
Is it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Because they're all looking out the window. You know, saying shit about you guys, it's so fucked up.
Very, uh, thin-skinned. These are councillors.
For me?
These are city councillors, quite a few of them.
He did come out and talk with us, and said he's fine with all the other signs he does have. That's the only one.
Yeah.
It's a sad time, really.
It is, and I appreciate that you guys have the energy to be out here. Yeah.
I operate, I like it on, uh, online level.
Yeah.
I don't have the energy for this.
He says it's so weird in there, because they're so concerned about us. We can see Linda's in there, uh, still got her phone out. Sure? That's alright, I don't mind, they got me in it. Thank you. To be clear, that is an illegal parking job. Right there, Howard. Can't park there.
I was in middle school when the state proposed a...
I'm not even listening.
I know you're not. That's good. That's good. We know, we know, don't worry, we're not gonna hurt him.
What? What? So much handshaking. Happening in there. We do have one of Holyoke's finest now parking by us. It's the same guy that drove by earlier. We got a good, getting a better view now that the lights going down. Don't worry, folks, I'll take you by a few minutes here. So, it's interesting that, um, police supervisor didn't really stop or say anything, but that was the second time he drove past. The first time, he just drove past, gave us a weird look, and he showed up right here in the alleyway. Stopped for a while, and then went on his way, as if he's not, he's not very subtle. So, one of the things that's happening for me is I'm seeing all these, all these vehicles look suspicious now, which is... That person's cool. Kevin Jordan's campaign, um, kickoff celebration. There he is. He ain't happy with us. We have some signs, um, specific to him, a lot of... I don't like that zoom, sorry, guys. So, I'll give you, like, Kevin Jordan, and drop the light. Uh, I don't know if you can, you can't see mine, but it, it says, uh, Jordan supports pedophiles and, uh, grifters, I think. I didn't make this one. Um, so, earlier, which is interesting, is a bunch of, uh, patrons, uh, came out of the pub. But what really stood out is one gentleman saying, "Bring back the Klan." And this is at Kevin Jordan's, uh, campaign rally. So, when I, uh, get back, I will be, um, I will definitely be editing this video to see if I can get that interaction. Um, but we are gonna continue to livestream, just because we want to catch things like that, like, um, these assholes. And the light gets a little down, I'll bring you guys over, so we could see just who is in there supporting this guy. Um, also, you know, point of fact, we have a city councillor at large parked illegally with this... Like, I get, I get that they have, um, handicapped, but that's not a handicapped spot. He's right on the curb. Which is, uh, a little weird. Jordan came out and threatened to sue us. Um, Linda Bacon was glittering about. One lady just went haywire, I think she's drunk. Insulting people's bodies and stuff, but... Um, but yeah, no, there was, uh, the person who came out, who said, "Bring back the Klan." And that is happening. That person is in Kevin Jordan's campaign rally. I went to, uh, look into the window, it's perfectly legal, you're standing on a public sidewalk, um, you can look into the window at places, cause you can't trespass the eye. Every time I see a yellow bus, I think it's, um, what's his name? Jeremy Whalen. He's everywhere, uh... There was like a week there, where, like, I saw him every day. So, when we have our weekly standout on Thursday evenings, we usually get some people, like, we got, uh, Zekiel at one point, um, we had an assault, um, and after I tried to get the assault on the GoPro, and then the, uh, footage was corrupted, because the SD card didn't work, like, I, I'm, I've just started livestreaming, right? And, um, so, what I don't expect is for, like, people to tune in, cause like, really, it's just traffic now. But when and if something does happen, um, we wanna be able to actually record it in a fashion that has multiple witnesses. That's the idea. And in this case like that, I'm so glad we did. I really freaking am. This is so cute, they keep coming to the door to, like, check us out. Yeah, I think we should call it at the normal time we call it. Yeah. Yeah. Seven more minutes. Well, if, if people wanna stay, I just wanna advise that our, our... I'm not staying. Our security, it will be less, yes, yeah. But obviously, yeah. So, I've got a camera pointed at traffic, mainly because no one is coming in and out of Pix right now, and, um, most of the time, when we do a standout, the aggressors are coming from the cars. Took a minute. Oh, I know this guy. Hi! How you doing? Huh? Well, um, we have a particular city councillor who's been there for years, who's definitely a white supremacist. Yeah, I know, that's why I'm saying, "How you doing? How you doing?"
Alright.
Yeah?
So, what, you're trying to get rid of him, or get somebody else in?
Well, yeah, no, I don't want any white supremacists on our city council, not now. Not ever, but especially not now, that... This is, yeah. Much as I want to stick and stay and, like, catch them on the way out, I don't want anybody to, like... They creep me out, they're creeps. These people are really creepy. Yeah, so, oh, okay. Yeah, I have to get a pizza, so I don't know. Okay. I have to call Mike. Mike going in here. My Gary going in here. Slow connection. I really gotta get a call. So, it's after 6:30. Yeah, we're gonna pack it in. Irish need not apply. That's what these assholes are forgetting. So, um, I'm gonna keep the livestream rolling, um, just until everybody's safe and out of the way. I'm gonna get one more, like, nice little overview of the inside, now that the light's gone down. I don't know, let's go see. Oh, that's a sketchy one. Yes. Oh, that might be, uh, that might be... Did we get that? Did you get that? That gentleman had a patch on his shoulder. We got a black Ford pickup truck headed towards 91. And a nice... Linda's gonna come over. Linda loves coming over to talk with us. Glare is killing me. They love us. They love us. They love the limelight. Hmm, we'll see if we can find the guy. Who are they speaking? Who is that, do they know? I'm telling you, all white people are... Come on, Howard. They get mad now, cause they can see my sign. They can see the signs right behind him as he's speaking. Sometimes it takes a minute.
What are you doing?
That guy is completely constantly baffled by my actions. He's such... He's so, that is so funny. He's like, "What are you doing?" Every time he finds me, I'm like hanging Lucy's signs or, you know, getting ready for Holyoke Against Ice or... Completely baffled, and then he told me to, uh, let me... I'm kinda waiting for you guys, I'm parked over here.
What?
I'm parked this way. Yeah. Okie dokie.
I was afraid to go in there and order it.
Well, this side's blocked off.
Yeah, that's a separate one.
This is a separate side.
Yeah.
Oh, this...
This is separate.
This is the restaurant, that's like the line.
Yeah.
Like, they have connecting parts, but they're separate. Oh, they don't have ones to do.
No, they don't.
All right.
Yeah, that's cute. Is this him with five? Yeah, that's him right there. He's got, he's lining himself right up here.
Let me tell you, when I lived at the Cape... It was all white people around me, I lived there for seven years, I was never so...
Oh, he's yelling about being harassed.
You know, it is boring.
What is this guy doing in here? He's not...
Oh, fearless leader.
What's up? What, what? You're double parked, man.
Be careful, dude, there's people up there. Be careful.
The scent is patriotic, my friend.
We're trying to say democracy.
The tea, the tea party. I'm not gonna bite, man. Okay? Go ahead, go find her.
What is he gonna do?
Nothing.
Notify Claire?
He says mommy's calling.
Oh, it's white?
No. He just came out here to say mommy's calling or something. Do you need a ride? Cause I don't know, uh, my car's full of tables and...
You're not tall enough.
Oh, they're short, it's okay. It's okay, you get shorter when you get older. This guy's got it high and tight though, so I wouldn't put it past him, but... You know, but, come on, I know we're supposed to be done, but like, we're right behind and they're trying to take pictures. Let's get out of here before we get in trouble.
We can't get here, anyway.
Well, we can't.
That's why they didn't tell us to leave, that's why they...
But our legal observers are longer with us.